To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have all received the minutes of August 16, 2007. I’ll accept the motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It’s been properly moved and second. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as sent, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We’ll move on then to the next item on the agenda, which would be speakers addressing an agenda item. And as I understand, we have one speaker, and that is Mr. Tim Mainz. Is Tim here? Mr. Mainz, you have three minutes, please.
Thank you, President Garcia. I’m actually surprised there aren’t throngs more here to join me in my comments to the board about the action which we hope you’ll take tonight in the policy on lead paint. I provided to each of you two graphs, and I will tell you that, for those of us who have been following this issue for some time, we’re delighted by the decrease that we’re seeing because of our added attention to this community problem. Already, in Monroe County, we have agreed to lower the level that we will look at as critical from 20 to 10 units of lead in the bloodstream as something that we should be paying attention to. We know that research tells us that the presence of as little as five would be detrimental to a child’s health. And we also know that the county and the city have been taking action, but because of the leadership of Commissioner White and the agreement and the support of many of you, we’re now looking at a policy that the city school district will also step up to the plate and say, even though we’ve been doing a great job of taking care of our facilities, and our facilities department, I think, deserves credit for that, we’re going to put on the books some policy that regulates how we will proceed in this area in the future. The stock of buildings that our students occupy are among the oldest in the city, and therefore are buildings that are subject to this problem. I show you the first graph and ask you to pay attention to that dramatic decrease in the number of children who have been affected by lead paint as measured by tests. These figures come from the Monroe County Department of Health, and that’s been the story in the press probably for the last eight to 10 months. But the story that I think you need to pay attention to is the second graph, because even though the numbers are going down, those students who have been poisoned have accumulated since 1993 to the point where we now have approximately 29,000 children in our community who have been permanently damaged by exposure to lead paint. Some of these children are just beginning, if they’ve managed to last, in our school system, beginning into their high school years. Others have not reached our system yet. But all of them, and I will tell you on a personal level, from watching them in my school, suffer from both cognitive challenges and behavioral challenges because of their exposure to lead paint. Each and every step that this community takes, including what I hope will be the step this board takes tonight, helps to continue to fight the ravages of lead poisoning in our children and helps to more likely guarantee the success of our children in the district. I compliment you and thank you and encourage you to support this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mainz. There are no other speakers, so we will conclude this part of the agenda. We’ll move on to the superintendent’s report.
Dr. Calla. Thank you. It was a very enjoyable opening of the school year. I set out a goal to make sure that I visited all of 65 school sites, including alternative locations, in two days, and I failed. It took me two and a half days, but we did get to all of the schools, and I think that’s very important that those visits are made and that we actually see how schools are running and how they open. What I have done is that we have built in spots in every week to make sure that I’m out and about and in the schools, and we have one day a week dedicated to being in the building, so I hope to see you often. This past weekend, we had a meeting at Cafe, and I just wanted to make a comment on what a good meeting it was. We had, I think, about 40 people there, and it was an incredibly proactive, positive meeting. What we actually began working on are goals and objectives and strategies for the future, and we have, I think, four or five pages of them, and I was just so pleased with the content of what was being discussed, talking about the behavior strategies, instructional strategies, you name it, and it was being addressed. And hopefully, that’ll be the first of many meetings. We have another meeting that’s being planned to finish going through the list. We got about halfway through it, and then we’re going to prioritize the issues and decide where we’re going to go, and we will present those to the board, hopefully, for support. I’m very encouraged by this, and I think it’s really a dawning of a day of some serious cooperation with the community and really looking at the community’s input in what we do. Within the last week, we were able to attend two groundbreaking ceremonies for the Frederick Douglass Center. That was today, and we really think that the Frederick Douglass Center, which has been in planning stages for years, is long overdue, and we’re so happy that that is finally going to be a reality. And of course, the Ryan Center, another issue that has been on the table for a very long time. Last week, the ground was broken for the Ryan Center and the renovation of School 33 on Webster Avenue. One of the issues that I see is, I think, one of probably the most important issue that we’re facing right now is short, long-term suspensions in our schools. We have, I believe, an inordinate number of long-term suspensions that we have had over the past years, and we’re already seeing in the opening weeks of school. I’ve met with the secondary principals to discuss strategies so that we can look at interventions before we get to the point of long-term suspensions. We’re also looking at the tutoring programs, the ITI and GTI, and looking at revamping those so that they’re more successful, so that we don’t have recidivism, that we’re not suspending and resuspending kids. Along with that, what we’re noticing is a lot of behavioral issues with 7th, 8th, and 9th graders, and I believe that one of the most important components for intervention is making sure that kids have adult presence and adult mentors. So I’ve been making some strong efforts to try to corral the mentors in the community. I’ve met with the Faith Community Alliance, and the Faith Community Alliance has committed to adopting every school in the district. 52 churches will adopt all 65 locations, and we have a commitment from them and their church communities, and we’re going to have a presence in every one of our buildings. I had a meeting this morning with a representative from EDS who has had a longstanding mentoring program over at Monroe for the last 12 years, in fact, and what we’re doing is looking at replicating that program, and we’re also looking at targeting 7th graders, again, as an intervention rather than as a reaction. So we’re looking at, we know that at 7th grade, that that’s a critical juncture, and that we need to be looking at 7th graders, and that we’re looking at a program that, when we first notice troubling issues with 7th graders, that they would be immediately, we would have a pool of 250 mentors, and that they would be immediately assigned a mentor when there was the first sign of an issue with a 7th grade student. So this is all in the works, and we’re hoping that we’ll be successful with that. I will be meeting with, again, one of the principals from EDS and Dr. Bruce Goldberg, who helps with our Generation Two program. We’ll be meeting with the CEOs of all of the corporations, all of the large corporations in the city, in order to build that pool of mentors. I think that should cover it.
Thank you, Dr. Calla. Before I turn it over to the members to see if they have any questions, when the Faith Alliance ministers go into the schools, would there be some sort of an orientation or a training as to how to handle specific type of issues and problems?
Yes, actually, with all the mentors, there will be a training as to exactly what is permitted, what isn’t permitted, how we’re going to go about doing it, what kind of help we’re going to provide. So, yeah, that’s one of the, actually, reasons for our meeting today, in order to pretty much define what the program will look like and the parameters of all that. And then there will also be some serious staff development with regards to that.
Any questions for Dr. Calla on either side of Commissioner Evans?
The only thing I would say is, thank you, Dr. Calla, for doing something that I think is pretty unprecedented, and that’s owning the long-term suspension problem. Once the superintendent, I believe, looks at, he looks at every single long-term suspension. By him doing that, he’s there by owning the problem and sending a message, setting a message from the top that this is something that is very serious, and I’m hoping that that message, I’m sure it will, because it’s coming from the top, will filter down to the buildings. I just think that that’s so important, and those alternatives that you’re looking at to suspensions, not just two hours a day and then getting off scot-free to hang out in the neighborhood, are going to do our students a lot of good. So I thank you for doing that, and I think that we’ll see a great benefit from that.
Any other questions, Commissioner Thompson?
I agree with Commissioner Evans that this is moving in the right direction, and I hope that we’re able to work with the Faith Community Alliance to build a sustainable program so that we can have relationships between mentors and students over the long haul. And I hope that while it’s not necessarily the district’s role, I hope that we will consider what kind of steps we might take to build community support, sustained community support for the families of some of the children that we’ll be working with. Yes, the kids are within our purview. We’ll do everything we can to support and advance them, but we also, as a community partner, need to be thinking of what other stakeholders can do to work with the families that are raising these children.
I’m glad you mentioned that, because it reminded me, of course, of our conversation this afternoon, which I forgot about that particular issue. Another area that I’ve put some significant time into is the Asset Initiative, the Search Institute Asset Initiative, 40 Assets. We are constantly looking at kids from a deficit model. You know, what’s wrong and how do we fix it after the fact, versus knowing, you know, that kids have, kids who are whole possess most of the 40 assets. And if we are going to expect a positive behavior, we have to implant the positive values in kids and provide them the opportunities to have, to obtain positive assets. The Asset Initiative is not a school initiative. The Asset Initiative is a community initiative. It demands commitment from the city, from community, from families, from churches, from all of the school community. And I’ve been working with the Asset Initiative for the past 10 years, and very well aware of the power of it and the importance of it. So I would like, I’ve already met with the city and have asked that we team up and that we together, work together on building assets for kids, and that we make both an intellectual and a financial commitment to building assets in kids. And I think I have that tentative cooperation from the city and that we need to move forward with that. This fall, and I think it’s November 10th, we’re fortunate enough in Rochester to have the National Search Institute Asset Conference, so it’s an opportunity for us to take advantage of that and start this initiative and become a part of this very important movement. And this is important for families, because assets is not just kids, it’s the entire family.
Any other questions? Commissioner Brennan?
President Garcia, just briefly, I just wanted to thank Dr. Calla for taking the trouble to attend the Cafe meeting, and it’s just characteristic of the approach that he’s taken ever since he came here that’s been, I think, extraordinarily refreshing and reflected in the demonstrations of community support for him. This is a challenging group, as we all know, an assertive group, and sometimes an angry group, and a group with a lot of good ideas, and they’re people very much worth listening to, and it takes an extraordinary effort and energy, really above and beyond what would be required of him or even expected of him, perhaps, to go and do this. I happened to be at the meeting Saturday, and I saw the interaction between him and these individuals, and it just made me mighty proud to have him speaking for this district and see the progress that they made and the progress that people make generally when they listen to each other. And the school district could do a great deal more good than it does even now if it would make this a routine thing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We’ll move on then to standing committee reports, and we’ll start with you, Commissioner Brennan.
Policy Committee will meet on October 3rd. We welcome Hazel Washington to the board staff, and we will be in close touch with her. There’s been a bit of a lull in terms of the staff capacity for that committee for a while. Linda Dunsmore has been doing a terrific job of kind of filling in while that position was filled and people got up to speed, but we will be addressing soon a whole schedule of review of district policy that we’re a little bit behind on, and I’m looking forward to productive work on that committee in the coming months.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on August 27th for an update on the Rochester Children’s Zone, a report on interactions with city council, as well as a letter drafted by Commissioner Powell. The RCZ, as many of you know, has transitioned from the district to the RCZ Board, Inc. Dr. George Larkins is the Rochester City School District liaison to the Children’s Zone. Following Jana Carlisle’s presentation, we agreed that the accomplishments to date of the Rochester Children’s Zone should be captured and broadcast so that the community knows that the RCZ is moving forward, and also that Northeast residents need to stay in or become more involved in the process through trust-building, and that transparency is the key to building trust. So we look forward to monitoring and watching the Children’s Zone as it unfold. I think it’s important for folks to know that it has transitioned, it’s not here at the district, we have a liaison there, but it is now an independent organization that will be responsible for administering this important program. And it’s also important, I think, that all people bone up and learn about what their activities will be. Lastly, Chief of Governmental Relations, Richard Hannan, reported on various city council activities. We hope that the positive relations with the city continue and translate into momentum for this truancy project, which we have had long conversations about. On a related matter, the Commissioners of Education’s notice of proposed rulemaking regarding the MOE has some elements that are objectionable and could conceivably weaken the district’s position. We discussed those at the meeting. The form and manner in which cities report compliance with the MOE provision should be added to the regulations. Mr. Hannan will convey that in a letter to the commissioner. A letter regarding, a letter to the city regarding the ’07-08 budget remains under discussion and should be finalized soon. The next meeting will be coming up soon, and we don’t have a date set yet. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Evans? Go ahead, Commissioner Powell.
It was my impression that the letter was, had full consent of board.
Well, I think it does. From your last note, you were okay with it now. Well, being that Commissioner Powell is okay with it, I guess the letter now has full consent, so the letter is finalized.
Commissioner Powell.
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, that’s not right, today’s the 25th. We’ve reviewed resolutions that appear in your packet, 194 through 209. Resolutions 194 through 203 pertain to educational facilities. 207 and 208 are procurement and supply. 204 and through 206 are finance and budget. We do have a budget amendment for 2007, ‘08 budget year. This is an increase in the budget due to an increase in grant revenues and the allocations thereof. So those are resolutions 204 through 206. Resolution 209 is an information technology resolution. All of these were approved by the Finance Committee. In addition to that, we do have the August 2007 financial reports. I believe they’ve been distributed to board members. I ask for, I move that the board receive the financial reports.
So moved.
It’s been moved and seconded by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Evans. Any questions regarding the financial report? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous of those members who are here?
Thank you. We also received a Student Activity Funds Report. The Finance Committee had no objection with this. We forward it and ask for the board to receive this report.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It’s been moved and seconded. Any questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled to be Monday, October 15th, at 5:30 PM. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Garcia. The Quality Assurance Committee met on Monday, August 13th, and among the agenda items were reports on attendance, suspension, and the Diagnostic Reading Assessment, the DRA. Attendance rates vary from school to school, and we believe that this must be attributable to more than geography. We know that achievement drops precipitously when attendance rates fall below 95%. The administration reported that principals communicate with parents using letters and phone calls when they see a pattern of absences or extensive absences. QA encouraged the administration to use all tools at its disposal to increase attendance and also asked how principals are held accountable, how they’re evaluated around issues regarding student attendance. We have asked the administration to break the information down by socioeconomics and to break down the other category, quote-unquote, to show data on Native American and Pacific Islander students, and we’ll receive that information in December. It’s clear that suspensions are a huge issue in the district. Now, while it may hold true that there’s less of a connection between students’ poor attendance and the cultural competence of staff, Commissioner White suggested that suspension and discipline measures represent the justice system to students, particularly African-American students, and it therefore makes sense for that information, which was presented to QA in bulk form, that that information be broken down by race and other categories. The violent and disruptive incident report known as VADER that’s due on November 1st will do just that, and QA plans to continue discussion at its November 17th meeting. The Diagnostic Reading Assessment, the DRA, is given to students in grades 3 to 8 three times a year, and results are recorded once a year. This is a different way of assessing students’ skills and allows teachers to identify individual students’ strengths and then tailor instruction from there. The intent is to bolster reading achievement and graduation outcomes. The discussion about the DRA moves into how reading affects retention and retention affects graduation. The Quality Assurance Committee may look further into that issue with personnel from the Research Evaluation and Testing Department. Several of the resolutions the board will vote on tonight are the type that are appropriate for QA review prior to them becoming resolutions and contracts. They involve a range of programs, services, and curriculum intended to do things like help improve students, parents, and teachers’ self-esteem, and to personal skills and cultural understanding, help students transition from elementary to high school, reduce discipline problems, suspensions and expulsions, promote social responsibility, and to great art and technology, and the list goes on and on. It’s a lot of programming involving lots of students, parents, staff, and contracts that pay a lot of money to a lot of vendors and community stakeholders. Dr. Calla and I met today to begin discussing a process by which this kind of business can be vetted at the QA table and, in most cases, recommended to the full board. That would be no small undertaking, since Dr. Calla reviews and signs off on anywhere from 20 to 50 contracts each week. So crafting a manageable, meaningful, and appropriate review process is important, but beyond that, we still have to figure out how QA and the full board can utilize this massive amount of information to better understand what is occurring in our schools, if resources are being allocated equitably, if what’s happening is cost-effective, how it’s being evaluated, and if and how it’s helping the district reach its goals. Dr. Calla is going to get input from his cabinet about a possible process, and QA will discuss this, and I hope to have a model for the board’s consideration, at least before my term ends. Because of the Columbus Day Observance, QA’s next meeting is Monday, October 15th, at 6:00 PM. The agenda will include a district and corrective action audit update, a report on summer school, an update on the status of the African and African-American Department, and an update on human resources/culture change initiative, and as always, the public is invited to attend. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. It was my understanding that there was a process for reviewing programs that were being considered for funding, but if that no longer exists, then I hope that we establish a process that the board can agree with as quickly as possible.
There’s a process in place. It’s a process that needs to be tightened up and refined and expanded in some cases, but also kept manageable. So there’s a process in place, but it’s not the best process.
Okay, fine. Any other questions for Commissioner Thompson? None. Commissioner White?
Thank you, President Garcia. The Audit Committee met on August 29th. We discussed the lead safe schools policy from a risk management perspective and the relationships of the claims auditor to the board. The legal department vetted the lead safe schools policy, thus Audit voted to endorse this historic enactment and implementation. This is Resolution 233 on tonight’s agenda. The committee discussed its concern respecting how the Office of Auditor General and the Claims Auditor Office interact. Board staff is going to look into how other Big Four school districts are implementing the legislation, and we will discuss further this issue at our October meeting. I anticipate that we will meet in the month of October. We haven’t set a date yet. We will also discuss during that meeting an audit of the parent involvement activities of this district. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any questions for Commissioner White? There being none, then we’ll move on to the next agenda item, which will be the consideration of the resolutions, and I’ll entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Resolutions, Number 150- And I'll entertain a motion to approve the Human Resources Resolutions, number 155 through 193.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved then second by Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Brennan. Are there any questions regarding any of these resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner White?
Yes. Resolution 171 refers to reductions in staffing in the district. It makes reference to two reductions, one in drafting and the other in technology. I just want to make sure those are the only reductions in staffing that are proposed in this set of resolutions?
Dr. Cala?
We believe so.
So the two individuals that are referenced there, we're not talking about reducing anybody else at this meeting?
Is there another one for the reading? Joanne?
No.
Okay, so it's not brought back on this one?
That is the question. Thank you.
I have no.
Any other questions? Commissioner Power?
I actually do have a concern that when a resolution is tabled, there's an absolute obligation to bring it up and discuss it in the subsequent, in the next subsequent meeting. So from a procedural standpoint, I think we do need to discuss it, even if the answer is to vote that resolution down.
So that resolution is not included in the ones that we're submitting tonight?
No, it was, I'm sorry, Mr. President. It was Resolution 78. I made a motion last time. That's right. I made a motion to table it. The resolution was tabled. It was regarding a reduction in reading, reading staff.
Okay. But that resolution, you're not prepared to bring that resolution back on today?
No.
Fine. So you can ask again at the next meeting or request that it be brought back for discussion, and it will be, we will do so. Any other questions regarding those resolutions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Do you have any presentations, Dr. Cala?
No, I don't.
No, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 194 through 203.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved then second. Any questions regarding those resolutions? This is regarding educational facilities. No question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 204 through 206. These are budget and finance resolutions.
So moved.
It's been properly moved then second. Any questions regarding those? Commissioner Power?
I just want to expand upon the discussion about the resolution to amend the budget. We have discussed in the course of the Finance Committee a need for complete republishing of the budget book because the Contract for Excellence produced so many changes from the budget that we approved in the spring that just as a matter of information for board members, and the general timetable that was discussed was to try to get that book into our hands by November. Is that correct, Mr. Cup?
Well, November is when the amended budget is approved anyway, isn't it?
Yes, and this gives us an opportunity to actually better understand what it is we're looking at. So it's just a matter, I'm bringing that as a matter of information so you know what to expect.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 207 and 208. These are procurement and supply resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved then second by Commissioner Evans and Power. Any questions regarding those two resolutions?
Mr. President.
Commissioner White?
I'm a bit confused here, and I want to concede that. When we got the original set, I understand that sometimes the packets evolve. And I had a question, which I submitted, duly submitted, in a timely manner, regarding what was, I'm getting better at this, which at the time was Resolution 180. At the time, the original packet was on page 32, and I'm only using this as an example. It obviously no longer is Resolution 180. It concerns Quad A, and I asked, I don't know where it is now, and quite frankly, having done my job, I'm having a difficult time finding it now in the current packet. You may have already voted on it, but I want to concede this because I think this is a bit problematic for me and for the institution. I asked a question. I don't know where it is, what resolution it's numbered now, and I'll concede my involvement in this dilemma, but I do want to.
Well, who responded to your question?
Well, it appears that Ms. Hancock and Ms. Carlyle responded to it.
Well, then, Dr. Cala, can you clarify to see where that resolution is now?
Well, I'm a bit confused myself because my understanding was after we had, I think it was about two months ago, where the numbers were changed because some were pulled, that we would never change the numbers again.
My understanding is the numbers did not change.
Exactly. So that's, I'm, yeah, the order I left is we can never change the numbers because we'll never find them again. So now, they should, the numbers should be the same.
All right. I can just tell you, let's see, if you're just indulging for a moment, resolution, give me a moment, folks.
Yes, you have a moment.
If you look at page on the yellow packet, what is our yellow packet, page 26, Resolution 180 refers to some kind of bullying program, all right? You see that? It's right at the top there.
Yes.
All right. And then, I guess my question is, again, I'm looking for it. Oh, I'm sorry. It is on page 32. All right. I told you I was confused, didn't I?
We know that.
It is on page 132, and I apologize for the confusion. Mr. President, is there a forum for me to ask a question about this? I know we've already voted.
It's on page.
We've already voted on this resolution.
Yep.
Why don't you do it on the old business?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
And that way, we won't hold everybody up.
All right. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All in favor of Resolutions 207 and 208, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 209, which is information and technology.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell and second by Commissioner Thompson. Any questions regarding this resolution? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 210 through 233, which is various resolutions of different sorts.
Might we separate Resolution 233 for, to give that final resolution its due dignity?
I will, I will accept, I will accept separating resolutions 233. So the motion then should be restated. I'll entertain a motion to, well, let's withdraw. Would you, would you mind withdrawing?
Yeah.
The previous resolution, and you accept the withdrawal?
Yes.
Fine. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 210 to 232.
So moved.
Second.
Being moved then properly second. Any questions regarding those resolutions?
President Garcia?
Commissioner Thompson?
I can't advance any questions. I appreciate receiving this 16-page packet in response to the questions that I submitted on Tuesday, I guess. But since receiving it, I haven't had a chance to review it, so I don't know if I have additional questions on the resolutions that the questions are about. So I'll vote on this, but it's not because I've had a chance to look over the responses.
Commissioner White?
Mr. President, and I, if I can excuse my own faux pas earlier on, that's exactly the problem. We were asked to develop a system that would allow us, staff, time to review this stuff. And as I've indicated, I did this in a timely manner, and we get the answers. And I know a great deal of work goes into them. I've complimented people in the past on their wonderful work, but it's very, it's not very helpful if we get them, if we submit them in a timely manner, if we get the answers on the day of the board meeting.
To be fair to everyone concerned, this meeting was not supposed to take place on a Thursday.
That's right.
So obviously, we are working on a short timeline here, and you have to be a little bit accommodating.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
I'd like to make some comments on that.
Dr. Cala?
I really just have to. We have nearly 20 pages of responses, and you could give us three weeks. This is going to take, these took a long, long time to get these. It's not like we don't have the answers. It's a matter of assembling these from all of the different various sources. And that was the, really the essence of our conversation, the conversation I had with Shirley today, is that we have to come up with a system where you are aware of what's happening in the district and that really, really prevents this kind of thing where we, where you're asking a million questions when they're not, that they're bad questions, they're good questions, and that we're scrambling at the end to try to assemble this. This is, we have someone who's working in our office for a temporary period of time, and that person put countless hours into this, into this document. And if we hadn't had that person, it would have been, again, much more difficult to try to put this together. So our, my goal is to try to put together a system where you won't feel that you have to ask all of these questions, that they will may have perhaps have been answered earlier on through a different process.
Well, the lack, I think the lack of a presentation on these programs has caused these questions to be asked. And if we can find some way of making a presentation to the committee or to the board members on each and every one of these programs so that all questions can be asked and answered at that particular setting, then we wouldn't have to go around and answer 200 questions that board member has based on the information they received on the Friday packet.
And as Dr. Cala quite honestly and frankly pointed out today, then the onus is on the board members to do the reading, to absorb the information, because you're right, a high percentage of the information that we currently receive is not fully reviewed, isn't fully read, and we still come back unprepared. So that's what I mean. It's more than just presenting the questions and receiving the information. We have to come up with the process that is going to allow us to process, to, and find a way to use that information in a manageable way.
I just sort of piggyback on that comment. If, if all the board members decided to write questions, I think they should be entitled to, and they should be entitled to receive timely answers. Dr. Cala, you and I and Commissioner Evans spoke about this earlier on, and I understand you have an awesome set of responsibilities, but we have to have the same level of review that you have to have. So I agree with you. We have to figure out a system because each of these board members could ask these questions. And just to go back to the question I was looking for earlier on, I asked, has Quad A ever been reviewed? And the answer was yes, annually. And that was it. Maybe I should have said, if it's been reviewed, what has been, but clearly.
See, that's the problem, though. See, that's the problem. You could look at every one of these issues and go into enormous depth.
Yes, you could.
And that's the problem with a question on a resolution. That's why the answer has to precede the resolution. Because if we are looking at it at the resolution stage, certainly, you know, has it been reviewed? Absolutely, it's been reviewed. Now, we could then go into the depth of questions that Shirley asked, for example, because Shirley did ask all of those subsets, which then brings us to 16 pages of answers, which, again, if done by more than a board member, even one board member, it becomes untenable. So we have to come up with a system where, if it's at QA, where you get the information, then, and the fear here, however, is still that, you know, we have, you know, a $630 million budget, we spend $50 million a week, if you do the math, okay? And I sign anywhere from 20 to 40 to 50 contracts a week. Understand, then, that our presenting all of these issues to QA, that becomes, that becomes
Unmanageable.
Very, very difficult to try to manage that. So I understand, you know, the board's need for information. I think it's, the board needs to also understand that there is an internal system that we're looking at to evaluate these issues. I could tell you without qualification that there's no contract that gets signed that doesn't have some sort of evaluative measure in it. And in fact, one of the resolutions that was pulled at the last meeting, Commissioner Thompson said, you know, why did you pull it? And I said, well, I didn't have enough information. And it was just exactly for that reason, because I had not seen the evaluation. And I, and it was one that I had missed in our normal review, and I caught it at the last minute. I said, look, I'm not going to, I'm not going to approve this because I haven't seen the evaluation that I need to see for that program. And subsequently, I did get the evaluation, was satisfied with it, and then it was back on. And this, this happens with every single contract of substance. We have to make sure that there is a measurable outcome, if it's a proven program, if it's a program that has a track record. Now, if it's an experimental program, we're looking at what is the projected outcome, and what are the tools to measure that. And there are plenty of contracts that don't pass our muster, that in fact have passed the muster in the past. So we are, we are developing a, I think, quite a defined review process. But the difficulty is getting you to the point where we are, which I don't, quite frankly, as I, my conversation with Shirley, I'm not sure I know the answer to that because of the magnitude of it.
Well, something has, something has changed because we used to, we used to review all programs before they were approved by the board. We have to have some way of doing it. You know, and it took place either at the leadership meetings, or it took place at a committee meetings, or some, but some board members were appraised of what the program consisted, and were able to ask all the questions they had and any concerns, express any concerns they might have about that particular program, including the vendor and the vendor capabilities for performing according to the contract terms. Commissioner Power?
Let me try to offer a couple solutions. First of all, we have technology at our disposal that allows us to bank documents and allows anyone with a password to retrieve documents on our own. It would require board members to get passwords and have some degree of security access. But if they were properly entered in the system and properly cataloged, we'd be able to retrieve the information ourselves on historical information. There's another part of the problem, though, and that is new initiatives. Things like our college partnerships have been an innovation in the making for probably more than a year, and the board has never been briefed on the full scope of what that college partnership should be. And some of the resolutions had to do with college campuses and relationships with colleges. So had we simply been kept apprised of initiative, the direction initiatives were going in a weekly quarterly, you know, superintendent's report, but a classic case of it not being considered either ready or important enough for the board's attention and, or perhaps the board not being important enough for the issue's attention. But however it was interpreted, there are ways to solve these problems, and I'd be happy to talk offline about some of the technological options that will help us solve the problem.
Thank you.
It's almost unbelievable that you wouldn't have been briefed on the College Board Initiative because that's rather large.
But it's true.
Yeah.
Let me discuss this at the board retreat, Mr. President.
Commissioner Thompson?
The full board, to the rest of my recollection, has not been briefed on the College Board, but perhaps we can double check. I believe that QA receives information, but again, it's the process with, with much of the information being shared at QA not being actionable, I believe is what we've said before.
Right.
It has not always been possible to include it in a report unless we're going to do a dissertation here on the day as for the QA report. So that's why we're talking about, we've got to come up with a process, a better process.
Okay.
There's a process, but it's not broken for all of us.
The point well taken. All in favor of the resolutions 210 to 232, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mr. President, I would just like to thank Johnson &amp; Johnson, Ellen Miller, Airport Rotary. It's always good to get gifts.
Thank you for that.
If I could also, President Garcia...
Yes, Dr. Calla.
I recognize our three administrators who have been appointed here this evening, who are out here. Dr. Robin Hooper, who has been named Acting Principal of School 33. Robin, I think I saw you earlier.
Would you stand please? I know who you are.
Where did you go?
Not here.
Well, she was here earlier. Mary Aronson, who's the Principal of Franklin Bioscience. Mary, there you go. And Nicole Crocker, who has been appointed Acting Program Administrator for pre-K. And she left as well. Okay. You have to make these meetings shorter.
Alan 13, motion to approve Resolution 233.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Resolution 233, are there any questions regarding this resolution?
The only comment I make is thank you to Commissioner White and the Policy Committee for all your hard work that you put into this policy. I didn't have to do that much of work on it, and I appreciate it. They did all the work at the committee level, and thank you.
Commissioner White?
Yes. I think it's appropriate, as we always should, to thank the citizens of this community. Specifically, I'm going to take a risk and identify some names. Joan Roby Davison from Group 14621, Derek Hazel, Ralph Spiezio, and Joseph Hill. I mention those names specifically because it was a blizzardy day. Weather conditions were bad, and I got a call, I think it was from Joseph Hill, who was here, and he said... Where is he? Oh, there you are. Hey, Joe.
Why the camera?
Joe called me up and said, "Van, you know, Joan and Ralph and Derek, we just got to meet with you." And I don't know, I guess I had some good tires on my automobile that day, and they came by my office, and we discussed what was rather urgent. It was worth the trip. So these citizens in particular ought to be applauded for their effort. Dr. David Anderson, who many of you know for many years, has fought the battle over lead poisoning decades ago. And he was like a prophet in the desert. No one was listening, and nothing happened. So Dr. Anderson should be credited. Organizations like 14621, the Lead Coalition, should be congratulated for all the good work that they do in this community in advance of hitting us on the head. They hit landlords who had children in houses that were unsafe. And at the federal level, they reminded homeowners, "Don't sell properties to folks where you know that there are lead hazards." We should also, Mr. President, thank district staff. I think this is a wonderful example of how the board and the district staff can work together. Quite frequently, I heard before getting on the board, "They just don't..." "They just don't want anything to happen that will be positive for kids." And this is a wonderful example. Ms. Wheatcraft, Michael Looby's staff worked through some of the difficulties and challenges that we had, and we have a wonderful policy, a policy that is unheard of in the 50 states. And you all should be congratulated. Speaking of central office and staff, we should not forget Dr. Rivera, who, when he heard about what was going on at school number 36... And by the way, they have great staff that were equally concerned about the problem. Dr. Rivera stepped in and went out to visit that school and looked at the paint chips that were of concern to Group 14621 and the Lead Coalition. I should also thank my colleagues on the board. This has been, again, a wonderful example of the good work that we can do as concerned elected officials. Specifically, I know colleagues who I don't mention won't feel offended by this, but I should mention Tom Brennan, who vetted the policy at the policy committee level, and Willa Powell. She and I both have a passion and an interest in this particular issue, and we got together at a number of different forums and discussed this and worked this policy out. Finally, everybody can take credit, citizens, communities, central office, and the board. We all have much to be proud of in this precedent-setting effort here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Power.
I only have two names to add to the lengthy list that Commissioner White listed. I'd like to name Mel Callan, who was a member of the Lead Coalition, who worked through their government relations committee. I also would like to name Tim Maines, who had done some very stellar work at city council to make sure that our city had appropriate legislation and who continued to serve on the Lead Coalition after that. So, thank you.
And I thank the committee people because, really, this policy, it simplifies how the committee work should take place in the district and how everybody can make a contribution. So thank you, everybody, for working on this policy.
President Garcia, I'd like to make a comment.
Dr. Calla.
Unbeknownst to me, I arrived in mid-April. I hadn't known the progress that had been made on this policy nor that it was even in the works. And one of the first groups I met with was the Lead Coalition. And we had agreed that we had to, beyond the policy, look at... Aggressively look at the condition that exists in our district. And what we have agreed to do is to replicate the, I believe, 1999 School 17 study. And as recently as yesterday, I met with Derek Hazel, Joe Hill, and representatives from the University of Rochester to examine how we're going to go about replicating that study to make... To see where we are in benchmarked compared to where we were in 1999. And we're also going to do something quite innovative, and we're going to look at our incarcerated youth and look at their levels of lead and try to see what relationships that we find. So we're well on the way to making that progress, and I think the policy, along with action, really makes for positive changes in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Power.
I do have one more remark and then a question to Superintendent Calla. The additional remark is that one other person's name came to mind. Brian Hetherington, another member of the Coalition, added to Derek Hazel and Ralph Spiezio, who have been regular attendees and driving forces. Brian Hetherington was also very active in the dialogue. My question is, relates to the graph that Tim Maines provided us. The question is, are we still testing children at the same rate, or the same number of children being tested year over year? I would hate to think that the decline that we're seeing is merely the product of decreased inquiry. I would love for it to be a genuine statement of fact, that in fact fewer kids are being lead poisoned even though we're testing every bit as many.
Excellent question. And of course, also, this is all of Monroe County, too. So we would, in the city, be... Would have a... Perhaps have a different-looking graph.
And that concludes our resolutions. We'll move on to unfinished...
Did we vote on it?
Oh, didn't we vote? I'm sorry. All in favor of Resolution 233?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Well, that concludes our resolutions. I'm going to give Commissioner White an opportunity on the unfinished business to ask that question. I don't want you to leave the podium without having your questions answered.
I appreciate that, Mr. President, but I think we had some dialogue that followed. It was regarding QUAD A. I would just ask that the staff do a follow-up to my question. What was the result of that evaluation of the QUAD A program?
In fact...
We asked Dr. Calla to do a follow-up to the question.
Yes, thank you.
If I could comment on that serendipitously, without any relationship to your question at all, I had a meeting with Adam McFadden today. And I asked specifically for the details of their evaluation, and I'm quite impressed, actually. And I have two documents, which we will forward to you... That he emailed me after our meeting. We have an Excel spreadsheet that shows the increase in attendance as a result of QUAD A and actually a decrease in suspensions, whether or not it's statistically significant, but it is a large decrease in number of suspensions. So I think... And the study, which is quite comprehensive on all our programs, is done, of course, by a third party so that, you know, it has validity to it, which often, many of our programs are done in the same way. So I think you'll be pleased with the results.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President Garcia.
Commissioner Thompson.
Were we supposed to receive a set of the responses to Commissioner White's questions? We've got the answers to mine, but...
I think they're in here. Yeah, they're in here. They're the last two pages, last several pages. I think there are... Well, there's actually... There's 10 pages, I think. The last 10 pages, they're...
I think, I found some.
You find them?
Thank you.
If there are no other old business items, then we'll move on. We'll move on to new business. And we have two items on the new business. Commissioner Power?
There's a third item.
There's a third. That case was settled, and we now have to respond as a board to Bente. And I just want the board to authorize me to send that letter. The letter has been prepared by our legal office, and for my signature, I have signed it, and if we approve it, then it will be sent tomorrow.
Mr. President?
Commissioner White.
My only concern is that Commissioner Elliott isn't here as part of this dialogue. And I'm not sure why she's not here, but I think that it would be appropriate, before we signed off or gave our assent to this letter, that we first make sure she's part of this dialogue.
Well, I don't think that's necessary, quite frankly, because she has given her testimony, which was included in the presentation to the court. We are only responding now to the court. Commissioner Elliott has nothing to do with it anymore. The court has says that we should send a letter to Bente explaining the circumstances as to why we didn't take any action. Basically, that's what we're doing.
Disrespectfully, I just would not be in a position to agree to that without hearing first. She may decide she doesn't want to comment, and that's fair, too, but I'm just not comfortable. But I realize I may be in the minority and accept the decision of the board.
Well, if, I mean, if you're forcing me to put it to a vote, then I will do that.
I'm just noting my concern. And again, it can go to a vote, and if the full board says, a majority of the board says, "This is the letter we want to send out," that will be the will. But I just want to note for the record, I think it would be appropriate if she were here part of this dialogue. That's not the president's fault. That's not any member of the board's fault. That's just my feeling. But again, we can take a vote.
President Garcia.
Yes, Commissioner Brennan.
I just wanted to express, whether this goes to a vote or not, that I share Commissioner White's concern about this. People having trouble hearing... Can you hear me now? I think that... And it's certainly not a matter of portioning any kind of blame to anybody up here, but it seems to me that there isn't any downside to waiting. And is there, or is there?
Let me ask a question. Mr. Looby, do we have a deadline that we're supposed to respond by?
The understanding was that the administrative board was that the...
Yeah, thank you.
That Bente would withdraw its improper practice charge, but the condition was that they were going to write a letter to ask the board to weigh in on whether or not the memo from Commissioner Elliott was inconsistent with Policy 2111 or not, and that we would respond. The matter will remain open and pending until we do respond.
Commissioner Power. Thank you, Mr. Looby.
Perhaps there's an easy resolution to this. You know, I would be pleased to comment on the behaviors that are at the heart of the improper practice charge, but that's not what's being asked of us. We're simply being asked to respond to the question about whether the contact was within the scope of our policy. And I will refrain from any comment on individual behavior or conduct if everyone else was willing to do that and to simply resolve the issue of the contact being one of an individual board member acting as an individual board member and not on behalf of the board.
Which is the question, really.
Which is what the question is. I don't think we need to go into the details of the issue in order to respond to the letter. Although, I must say, I'm disappointed she's not here. In the same way, I'm disappointed she was not here when Bente made their presentation to her.
Commissioner Thompson.
If we're considering revising in some way the letter, then I'll add my two cents. I think that we should speak just to the issue at hand, and I would be supportive of that letter. I don't know that the one, two, third paragraph, "The board wishes first to assure you and the members, so on and so forth." I don't think that's necessary language, and I wouldn't be supportive of it. And therefore, I would not support the letter.
Well, look, let's not discuss it any further. We're not going to send this letter until I get assurance from everyone that the terminology in the letter is to everybody's approval and that what is being said is that everybody understands exactly what is being said. Because this is not... I mean, I thought that we were all in agreement, and that's why the letter was sent in the Friday package. You've received all the material regarding this issue. And if you had any legitimate complaint about the text of the letter, you know, I mean, there was plenty of time to say something, but if you didn't say it, then we'll take it up at the next meeting. So...
Mr. President, if I could just say briefly, I think out of respect to... And I know this may be taken up to the last meeting, but out of respect to Bente, this letter should be sent, I think, as soon as possible. Folks aren't ready to do it today, that's fine. But I would note that this has been a... That the... That the letter should be sent as soon as possible out of respect for them, because I'm sure they're looking for a response.
Fine. So we'll... I will not put that on the agenda. What's the third item, Commissioner Power?
I'm sorry?
What's the third item on the new business?
Yes. I had discussed with Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Brennan the possibility of convening an ad hoc committee to discuss school choice and essentially to educate the newer members of the board on what the history of our choice decision was. And then, and for that ad hoc committee to work between now and December 31st at... With the mission of educating our fellow board members and then starting that fresh with the next new board members coming in in January.
Do you have any recommendations for board members who want to sit on that committee?
Yes. It was my hope that Commissioner Thompson would join me in communicating the old knowledge and that Commissioner White and Commissioner Brennan would participate in that, along with any appointments that Dr. Calla might make.
Fine. Just want to... I will appoint the four of you to that committee, and I'll ask for the board to ratify that appointment. I just want to remind you, though, that even though there are four members on the committee, the committee rules still follow. You cannot make any decisions at that committee that you have not presented to the full board at a forum.
I understand, and I... I understand, and I understand that you're saying that for the benefit of the audience, because...
Yes.
There will be four committee members. This, in fact, was the case when we first discussed our choice plan, is we had four out of seven board members sitting at the table, which is a little unprecedented for a committee, but...
So I hereby appoint the ad hoc committee to review the choice policy, and I asked the board for ratification, all in favor of those four members. Please say aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you. The committee has been appointed. We are now going to listen to speakers on other than agenda items, and we have an extensive list. Please remember that you have three minutes, and when I ask you to please conclude, please conclude so that you give the right to the next person to be heard. The first speaker on landfill at Edison is Mr. Willie Sanders.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The agenda is that I should speak on the landfill at Edison, but I will not. We're working with Dr. Cala, and he's taking very good care of that, so I do have something else I want to speak on.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Okay.
The mic's a long way away.
There's nothing wrong with the telephone, it's just that it's slow.
I understand. Same thing happened at the city council last week. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. I am Willie Sanders, father slash parent, president of the parents group of IIT at Edison High School, a member of the school-based planning team, a member of the PPC, and a co-chairperson of the educational committee for the NAACP. I am a firm believer in parent involvement. I'll be brief and straight to the point. Edison High School needs money for our children to better prepare themselves for the future. The engineering and applied technology schools need more updated and modern equipment. Everything is outdated. Also, imaging and information technology needs supplies such as paper and ink for printing. So how can we better prepare our children for the future? Simple: invest. The best investment a parent can make is in their child. Now, I know this board agrees with me 100% because when they agreed last year to give salary increases to top officials, and I quote, "The reason was," by the board, "we are asking for our children..." I'm sorry, phrase that. "When they agreed last year to give salary increases to the top officials," and I quote, "the reason was to retain quality people." And that's exactly what we are asking for our children to be given a chance to be quality people. Those quality people that are making more than the mayor should be held accountable for the ongoing neglect that exists at that school. The $160,000 that was wasted for the search of a superintendent or the newly hired chief financial officer whom retired from the city at $112 a year, $112,000, and came in with the city school district at a starting base pay of $152,000 a year. You do the math. With these overly outrageous salaries of these top officials, surely we can find money for our children. So my challenge tonight is to the board member that's assigned to my school as the liaison, convince these top officials where their priorities should be, and stop by as soon as possible. Show your face every once in a while, and visit the children, principal, and the staff, and I am sure they would love to see you.
Could you please conclude, Mr. Sanders?
You caught me at the right time, Mr. Garcia. In my closing, any comments or suggestions, I am listed in the phone book. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker would be Mr. John Bliss. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Bliss. Charlie... Mr. Charlie Richardson.
Sorry that I have to hand this out like this, but you come here, bro. When does my three minutes start?
When you get to...
It's just about started, Mr. Richardson. It's supposed to be out there. We'll leave the paper there, we'll pass them around.
You give it to the clerk.
Give it to the clerk.
My name is Charlie Richardson, and I happen to be with neighbors helping neighbors currently with a new office address of 161 South Union Street, Rochester, New York 14607. I have been involved in this community for 36 months, on the streets with the youth, finding out what the real problems are. And I will tell you, I attended a hearing that they had on charter schools here tonight at 5:30 with the only speaker being signed up. I was told I had only three minutes. They also told two other people, the audience had decided they wanted to speak because there wasn't any other speakers they could speak. Mr. Garcia, I will be contacting a civil rights attorney to sue you. You acted out, you took away my right to speak for something that I have spent a lot of time on to try to help get the kids educated. And that's why about a charter school. We have $12.5 million setting in a building down on 690 St. Paul Street that the politicians are playing with that has a charter school in it. I've been down to the Harlem Children's Zone. I'm a graduate of the parent university for the city school district. I've been in every one of the schools. I've talked to the youth. And what we need in this community, and Mr. Cala started to say about our kids in jail, we need them in school, not in jail. We need that building to take 16- to 24-year-olds that made a mistake and got out. As long as they're not pedophiles and as long as they're not violent criminals, we should find a way to entice them to get back and be educated. I did not like being removed from the office. There's a valuable piece of paper here put out by the Boy Scouts of America through the University of Rochester, showing in Monroe County what our youth want to do in the future. We teach the tests. Now, we ought to teach what they want, and that's how we can get these children back in. What I'm requesting is, as long as you spend all the money on the Rochester Children's Zone, which is a waste, and I said on that committee, as the adult education and jobs, they would not let me, because of the protocol of the city school district, bring in the people off the streets that I was working with to really find out what they need. I'm asking this board of education, as long as you've got all kinds of money to spend, okay, for a two-day educational trip, we want to take 20 youth that have failed for at least two years, and Dr. Cala, the mayor again, and anybody else on the school board that has not been to Harlem, and go down and see that school. I ask you, please write down this website, harlemchildrenzone.org. Go in and look at the annual report after 12 years. 100%... 100% start the school graduate. 100% went to college for the first year.
Will you please, sir?
You're going to have to remove me, I need one more minute, please.
Would you get the Rochester police off?
Yes, I will have one more minute, please. Is there anybody on the board that could allow me one more minute, please? Is that a no? They turn over my business card that you have and ask about that four-way test. Mr. Garcia, you're out of order.
I'm going to ask you respectfully now, you have concluded...
I have no respect for you anymore, and you have to have me removed. I have rights.
Okay, Tom, would you get the police officer here? We'll have a brief recess, please, while the police officer gets here.
Thank you.
We can continue with the meeting. The next speaker is Mr. John Bliss. Mr. Bliss, I caught you off, I'm sorry.
By the way, there is a Harlem Children's Zone in Rochester. It's called the Urban Choice Charter School, and I started it. And I want to start by telling you that I think charter schools and city schools can get along, and we can learn from one another. And this is an invitation for everyone to come to our school. The demographics are very similar to what you have in the city, but it's a fabulous school. So much... So do I believe in it that I sent my own daughter there. And you're welcome to come. I gave you an article that I wrote sometime about... Something I saw, an old guy that was helping a little kid ride a bike, and the kid was falling down, and the guy was helping him up, and it was amazing. And it was touching. And those of you that know me know I'm not particularly touchy-feely kind of a guy. But when we're talking about improving schools, one of the things I think that we forget is this emotional element, which leads me to my second point. Your superintendent is right there. I'm not here to tell you about the search committee, or what you did right, or what you did wrong, but I know that there's a certain sense of hopelessness in this community. I live in the city. I know as much about Rochester City Schools as anyone in the room, and I have a real good pulse for what the people in the community are saying. And I don't know that you can get Dr. Cala to stick around or not, but I know it's like a captain steering a ship, and this ship is a real long ways from the dock. And I guess all I'm suggesting to you is, if he's willing to stay on for a period of time until you find your permanent person, be patient. I can't imagine how long it would take to bring somebody in, even if they're an insider, to understand what needs to be done and really embrace those people around them. So I just came here to say that it's pretty rare that an individual can inspire people who they've never met before. And this city now has a little more hope than it had a year or so ago. And I know that to be true, because I'm in the middle of it, and I talk to people all the time. So I just wanted to share that with you. And again, open invitation to the Urban Choice. It's right around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss. The next speaker is Catherine Mullen.
Good evening. Trust me, I won't go over my three minutes. Good evening, Dr. Cala and commissioners. My name is Catherine Mullen, and I come before you this evening feeling a little bit like the bird in that classic children's book, Are You My Mother? Although my question has nothing to do with parentage, I like the bird have searched relentlessly for what I thought was an answer... What I thought was an answer to a fairly simple question. Answers I've gotten thus far have been quite disturbing. So I come before you tonight, and I ask you, what does it take to be qualified to teach in the Rochester City School District? My history with the district spans over 20 years, from being an active parent and guardian to a child who attended city schools, to serving as a consultant and as a hearing officer, conducting over 2,000 long-term suspension and expulsion hearings. I, along with members of the RPD, started a weapons diversion program that engaged students and parents over 20 years ago. Yet, I'm not qualified to teach in this district. I hold a master's in admin from UB. My concentration was urban studies, and my master's thesis was an in-depth analysis of the district's implementation of recommendations made in a report it commissioned following the death of Peter Castle. My knowledge of the district's history, its students, its triumphs and its challenges is extensive, yet I'm not qualified to teach in this district. I know my time is limited. I've served for 10 years as the county's alternative to incarceration coordinator, assisted in the development of the local mental health and drug treatment court, served as chair of the county's mental health community services board, was among a small delegation that worked with then-drug czar Barry McCaffrey, General Barry McCaffrey, on protocols for behavioral health and criminal justice practitioners. Our work was subsequently published and distributed by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, yet I'm not qualified to teach in this district. Do these things qualify me to teach? Not necessarily. However, in 2000, I left a very successful career with the county, and I earned another master's science in education. My goal was not just to teach, but to teach in the city. I student taught at Douglas and Marshall, and finished that experience with letters of recommendation from building principals. Yet, I was behind a long line of urban teachers for tomorrow, who were apparently more qualified to teach than I was. I was contacted by the district on August 9th of this year and told that there were existing and anticipated vacancies in my field. What occurred after that is, I will not expound in this forum, it's neither appropriate time or place. However, I will say that I was left deeply offended as a professional, disheartened as an educator, and as a city resident, pretty POed, pretty outraged. I do not disparage the qualifications of those hired after I was contacted. However, at a time when our students are in crisis, and we know the correlation between teacher quality and student achievement, can we allow personal agendas and system inefficiency to compromise our children's education? I am urban by choice in every sense of the word, yet I teach, and I teach very well in a suburban district, not necessarily by choice. I beg an answer to my question. What does it take to be qualified to teach in this district? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Alan Urbanski. No, I'm sorry, Corinne... Oh, that's Misaki. Alan Urbanski, please. Oh, Misaki. I thought she was Catherine Mullen. Yeah, I'm sorry, Misaki. I got my list there, Ron.
Let me know when I start. Good evening, Superintendent Cala and members of the Board of Education. My name is Corinne Hickey. I am a reading teacher who was just laid off from the district this August. Why am I here tonight? To plead for my job? Certainly, I want to work in the city. I have been here for nine years, and I am dedicated to this wonderful district. However, this is not the reason. I am here tonight to address the necessity of employing reading teachers in the city school district. Many citizens of our city may not be aware that the district's reading teachers have been downsized over the last decade from almost 50 to what is now a total of two. This is a district that suffers a great number of highly deficient readers. Far too many of our students read at levels well below their grade levels. Many of our kids just cannot read. In view of this, why have our reading teachers been all been eliminated when this has not happened in neighboring districts? One reason could be to save money. Is that a good reason, however, to eliminate teachers in the one area of learning that is so absolutely crucial to a child's educational success? And reading is just that. It is a simple, most important skill in anyone's education. All disciplines of learning depend upon good reading skills. Another reason seems to be the belief that reading teachers can be replaced by ELA teachers. How can this be done? According to the district, this could be done by providing our ELA teachers with training and reading instruction. Where does that training come from? Workshops that attempt to show these teachers how to merge two vastly important jobs into one, teaching, reading, and running an ELA classroom? Is this possible, an ELA teacher doing both jobs? Again, go to our successful neighboring districts, such as Fairport, Pittsford, Penfield, East Rochester, Rush Henrietta, and Brighton, and merely ask them if they have bought into such a plan. Your answer will be no. They also want to save money, but they seem to realize you must pay for quality. Let me comment on the goal of providing workshops to ELA teachers and teachers in related disciplines. This is a fine goal and logical to a point. ELA teachers should be respected to incorporate reading direction and practice within each and every class. However, this does not provide the extremely important areas of remediation that so many of our students need to reach, the reading levels necessary to function in our world today. Let's be direct here. I am a reading teacher. I have a master's degree in reading. This is a degree that requires 30 graduate-level credits of reading instruction. It takes more than a year to acquire such an education. Does our... Does our district really expect to replace this level of education with several hours of in-house training? If it does, it is being unrealistic. But more, it is putting our children at a serious disadvantage compared to our neighboring district children. North Star, the school where I worked, provides service to many non-readers and some who are four to five levels below their grade. This is sad in itself. It is sadder that this very special alternative school there now is no reading teacher. I implore the district to reconsider the direction in which it is moving. Again, look at our neighboring districts. I would encourage you to reconsider the plan to eliminate reading teachers. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey.
Thank you.
Dr. Adam Urbanski.
Good evening, Dr. Kala, members of the board. I'm Adam Urbanski, and I speak on behalf of the 3,700 teachers that you employ, and I simply want to echo the message that Ms. Hickey just delivered to us. In 2001, you had 47 reading teachers in this district. You cut it back to 29 in 2001, 2002. Then you cut it back to 20 in 2002 and 2003, and you're now down to between two and six, depending how you classify them. More than 60 schools and fewer than six reading teachers. Now, let me put it in perspective. They have over 100 in Buffalo. They have more than 50 in Syracuse. They have 18 in Dr. Kala's former district, Fairport. They have 24 in Penfield. They have one at least in every school in Brighton. They have nine in Pittsford. They have 22 in Rush Henrietta. They have 12 in Churchill-Chile. They have 29 in Goois. They have eight in Broadport, 14 in Gage-Chile. They have two per each building in Hilton. We have one for every 10 schools in Rochester. Now, somebody must have decided along the way that reading is not that fundamental. And yet, research and common sense dictates that reading is the basis for all other learning. If you can't read, you won't learn science, or history, or math, or anything else. I know from research that reading is the second strongest predictor of success in school and in life, only second to the amount of time spent with nurturing adults. Nothing else even comes close. The research actually shows that the very visibility of books at home makes a difference. So reading is incredibly important, and I'm kind of puzzled because the whole premium right now, with No Child Left Behind and testing, is on numeracy and literacy. To cut back on reading when you're testing on literacy? Something is missing here. It does take special expertise and special knowledge to be a reading teacher. You cannot compensate for it with a workshop for the other teachers. So, I know this is not new to you. You all received a letter from Walter Adamson, I think his name is? A retired teacher who laid out the case for you and his correspondence with Connie Leach and others. So here's my suggestion. I mean to be helpful, I'm not angry, I'm disappointed that we tolerated the situation for a long time. But here's what I suggest, that you determine to restore reading positions, at least one per school, maybe two per school if you can see it affordable. And you can take it from the windfall money that comes to us from the fiscal settlement about equity. As a matter of fact, you can build it into the Contract for Excellence, which Governance Spitzer offered to us. We will help you, we will support it. And while you're at it, consider going beyond that. And actually, since the Contract for Excellence says it can only be spent on new, not existing, but new programs, sadly, this would be a new program for us, so would be counselors at elementary schools, so that children with problems don't become problem children, so would be alternatives to suspension, which were all wiped out in this decade, in this half of the decade. Please, one of the most important things you can do is to restore reading teachers, guidance counselors for elementary schools, and alternatives to ousting kids from places of learning instead of providing to them the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Urbanski. The next speaker is Karen Morales.
Good evening. My name is Karen Morales, and I have been a teacher of the Rochester City School District at Nathaniel Rochester Community School for the past seven years. I have been a supportive and productive member of both the school-based planning team and building committee. I have also committed myself to assist in the growth of the PTCO membership. In attempt to do so, I founded and chaired Nathaniel's most successful event for the past two years, Multicultural Night. This idea was born from my yearning desire to build a stronger connection between our school, staff, students, and their families. As we all know, research shows that students who come from supportive families achieve greater performance in schools. On that preface, I designed and piloted an extremely successful home reading program. In 21 days, the average growth was a remarkable 2.43 reading levels. My point? My continued employment will assist the district in obtaining Policy 200, number one, to employ the best possible school staff. Unfortunately, in life, the unforeseen also happens, as my family was reminded of again last night while spending three and a half hours in the ED at Rochester General Hospital with our youngest. I'm happy to report she is fine. The event that made my teaching career come to a screeching halt was the unforeseen medical journey that I was forced to embark upon. In June of 2006, my chronic pain and constant fatigue reached an unbearable high. The juggling act that I was performing had one too many balls. Of course, the wife, mother, family ball continued. The commitment to the 25 students that sat before me daily and their families continued. So, the graduate coursework began to slip and eventually dropped. I am currently one and a half courses from completing my master's. Unfortunately, it's too late. I lost my certification. Ladies and gentlemen, we all want what is in the best interest for our children, meaning the Rochester City School District's children. And I acted in their best interest when I kept their ball up. It wasn't until July that I committed myself to my health. The journey was long and full of doctors and their tests. My medical condition was serious and potentially life-threatening. I had obstructive sleep apnea syndrome. With this, one may stop breathing while sleeping up to 30 times in an hour, therefore never reaching RPM sleep. I'm again happy to report I'm now doing great and no longer suffer from the syndrome after having surgery this past summer. In winning my fight with my health, I lost my dream. With district's policy in mind, that teacher certification is the teacher's responsibility, I began another fight. I wrote the state ed department several times, stayed on the phone for hours, called in support from BOCs and Senator Alessi's office. A petition was written, and many of my colleagues wrote letters on my behalf, to no avail. Therefore, due to my extenuating circumstances, my failed efforts to resolve my issues on my own, and especially my commitment to the children of our district, I am asking you, Dr. Kala, to reconsider my request for a letter to Commissioner Mills in order to assist me in receiving an extension of my certification due to extenuating circumstances. If it is true that hundreds of people are in my same situation, then perhaps it would be in the district's best interest to support us. Then, you would be assured of the commitment and dedication of those hundreds of teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Ms. Phyllis Wallace.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before the board. This is a quote, "At no time will any candidate for employment, current employee or former employed-y suffer any adverse action or be granted any benefit for any reason other than the personal merit or conduct or in violation of any law or regulation." With this statement in mind, I believe that I, Phyllis Wallace, Mass Specialist at Nathaniel Rochester Community School, was unlawfully put on inactive status by the Human Resource Department of the Rochester City School District. If you were to access my certification status on the New York State website, you will see that it clearly states that my childhood's education grades 1 through 6 professional certificate was issued with an effective date of February 1st, 2007. This certainly indicates that I had the necessary credentials to maintain my position of Mass Specialist at Nathaniel Rochester Community School for the 2007-2008 school year, which began in September 2007. So why am I currently on inactive status, is the question I'm so vehemently trying to get answered. Although I've met with Joanne Graffita and Kim Dice in an effort to have my concern addressed, the response is the same. My position has already been filled, and it would be too disruptive to students to put me back into that position prior to January 2008. That answer in no way speaks to the fact that there wasn't a vacancy to be filled, that I lawfully held and qualified to maintain my position as Mass Specialist in RCS. The fact that the effective date for my certification was February 1st, 2007, was repeatedly shared with and ignored by members of the Human Resource Department, namely Rebecca Torres-Lynch, Joanne Graffita, as well as Kim Dice. And asking Joanne Graffita to address in writing the teacher's certification process, she only cites three areas. One, teachers who are not certified. Two, teachers who become certified at any time during the first semester. And three, teachers who become certified can return earlier if we, the district, have a vacancy anywhere in the tenure area. What does return earlier mean, and who are you referring to when you say teachers become certified, and when will they become certified? When does a position become a vacancy? We all recognize that students and teachers are very resilient groups, which are often required to adjust to change. But believe me, a change is much easier to take two weeks into the school year than it is over three months into an already established protocol. So please, please answer my question. Why am I, after leave of absence, when my status clearly says that I am qualified as a certified teacher, K through, 1 through 6, and it was an implementation date of February 1st, 2007? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Our next board meeting is October 18th at 6:30 PM. And at that time, we would also be observing Hispanic Heritage a month at 5:00 PM. You're welcome to come at 5:00 for the celebrations, and the board meeting will start promptly at 6:30. If you wish to see any of the upcoming items that are going to be discussed at the next board meeting, please go to our website, and the agenda is posted there, and as well as the resolutions, you'll be able to see all the business that is going to be discussed at the next meeting.
Mr. President.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanted to note a point of information. The comments by Dr. Urbanski, Adam Urbanski, and Ms. Hickey were related to Resolution 78, was I had made a motion to table at the last meeting. So I wanted to put it all in its context. Those two comments related to Resolution 78, which was tabled and is still tabled.
Yeah, thank you, and it's going to be brought back to do one thing or the other at the next meeting.
That's right.
Thank you.
Motion to move into executive session.
It's a motion to, has that been second?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Fine. Second session it is.
Did you say you want to executive session? I take my eye back.
We know we got a briefing.
Yeah.
Yeah.